We're on.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for January 18th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Could everybody stand for the pleasure of the reasons, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is for all.
Okay. Now, opening comments, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Condolences to the Bennecke family for losing one of theirs and condolence to a loss, especially, I was very, very close with Richie Baldini. They're going through a tough time now, which obviously they would. That's enough. Thank you.
And my condolences also to Stephen Bennecke. He was, had family roots in Nahant. And Richie, I grew up with Richie, I went to school with him, went to school with Linda, and I still can't believe it, that he's passed. Linda, and Michael, and Jen, and Jeffrey, I just, we feel terrible, and our condolences go out to them. Thank you.
Okay. Opening comments. We just went through that. Approve the, and release the five minutes?
Is it possible that we wait for Richie for these?
Yeah, I think we should.
Next meeting?
I think we should.
Since the summer executive session once, and one he was at, I wasn't.
Right.
So.
So, we can release them at the next meeting, and by the way, Mr. Longbad won't be with us tonight, he's a little under the weather, so we'll just move on. I'm gonna switch it up a little bit. We have the annual audit. Matt Hunter's here from...
Powers and Sullivan.
Huh?
Powers and Sullivan.
Yeah.
Yeah, Powers and Sullivan.
Clifton Larson Allen.
All right. So, we'll get him out of the way quick because he's...
And plus, this is the most...
The whole notebook.
It's the most exciting part of the night.
Right.
We all know that. So, we'll get into it, and obviously, as I go along, you know, feel free to ask questions. If you had a chance to take a look at the reports, so please feel free to interject as I go along. But as we always like to do, is to try to take these audit reports that contain a lot of information, and try to condense it down to the parts that we feel are the most important pieces to point out. So, getting right into it, really two reports that we want to talk about, financial statements and management letter. So, we'll jump right in to the financial statements. I'll also try to give page number references on the financials as I go along and give some of these numbers. So, if I neglect to do that, please let me know. But basically, what I'd like to focus on first is if you look at your governmental funds balance sheet, which is on pages 15 through 16, in particular focusing on your general fund fund balance, looking at the fund balance at the end of the year, it was a little under $2 million. And we'll get into some of the components of it. You'll see on page 15, you'll see that that fund balance is broken down into various components, so I'll go over those a little bit. Part of your fund balance is considered to be committed for $634,000. That mainly consists of amounts that were set aside to help fund the FY18 budget. The assigned amount of about $112,000, that represents encumbrances, budgetary amounts from FY17 being carried forwarded to FY18. So, that leaves what we call unassigned fund balance of about $1.2 million. Just for frame of reference, your general stabilization fund balance is included in that number, and that's about $100,000 of the balance. So, in terms of your unassigned fund balance, I know that bond rating agencies really take a look at that number, and one of the things they do is sort of compare that number to your expenses and your revenues, just to get an idea of how that unassigned fund balance compares to your annual expenses and revenues. So, that ratio for this year is about 10%, which is very healthy. And as a measure of comparison, in the prior year, that ratio was a little under 8%. So, the general fund had a strong performance in FY17. And you'll see that on both pages 17 and 18, which is your revenue and expense statement, and you'll also see that as well on pages 61 and 62, which is your general fund budget to actual statement. So, I'd like to just clue in on that statement for a little bit, page 61, 62. Feel like this statement really gives you a good window into the general fund's performance for the year. And one thing that I always, the number I always take a look at, is if you look at sort of three rows from the bottom, it says net change in fund balance. Then if you look at your final budget column, and you look at that net change in fund balance number, it's a negative 779-547. So, what that means is, that if you took a snapshot right there, what that basically means is that in order for the budget to balance, the town needed to use $780,000 worth of reserves, both amounts from the prior year, as well as free cash, overlay, etc. So then, in terms of the general fund actual performance, if you look at that, page 62, and you look at that same line, net change in fund balance, you'll see that the actual net change in fund balance is a positive $245,000. So, we went from a budget needing to be balanced by $780,000 to reserves, to a net change of a positive 245. The reasons for that is if you look at that variance column on page 62, and you'll see the performance compared to your budget, you'll see that revenues came in higher than budget by about $754,000, and then your expenses came in lower than budget by $251,000. So, the town did a really good job with conservative spending, and revenues coming in a little bit higher than anticipated. That's why that general fund fund balance was able to get up to that 10% level. A couple of other funds, sort of circling back a little bit more towards pages 15 through 18, you'll see some other funds listed, have their own separate column. Those are considered to be other major funds for the town, either because the balances are a certain level, or also because the fund has some level of importance. So, if you look at your CPA fund, talk a little bit about that. Then actually, take a look at your revenue and expense statement on page 17. You'll see that you collected surcharges of a little over $100,000, received amounts from the state of about $94,000, and then expenses for the year are about $270,000. Talk a little bit about your water sewer enterprise fund, which you can get information on the enterprise fund on pages 21 through 23 of the report. Total net position at the end of the year, or quote-unquote "fund balance" at the end of the year for water sewer enterprise, was about $4.7 million. You'll see that there's, that fund balance amount, net position amount is broken down into invested in capital assets and unrestricted. You'll see that that negative unrestricted net position water sewer is caused by the fact that you have that $1 million short-term note that's outstanding at the end of the year. You had, I believe you had some water repairs, some emergency repairs that needed to be done. So, that's why you see that negative number. So, I assume once that note gets paid off, that'll flush itself out, and that balance will go back to a positive number.
Is that on the fund net position?
Yeah, exactly.
700 and...
Yeah, you see, there's about a negative 834,000.
Okay.
In unrestricted. And I just wanted to point that out, because that's usually not the case, that that number's a deficit, and the only reason is because of that one-time occurrence of that short-term note. In terms of your rubbish enterprise fund, page 21, you'll see the total net assets in the rubbish enterprise fund is about $136,000, mostly considered to be unrestricted. And revenue and expense activity on page 22 is pretty consistent with the previous year as well. So, those are really, we think, that sort of the highlights of the actual financial statements themselves. Then when you get into the notes to the financial statements, there's a couple of notes that we want to point out. Note nine on page, starting on page 45, gives you information of the town's outstanding long-term debt. Outstanding long-term debt at the end of the year in total was a little over $4 million, about $3 million related to governmental activities, and a little over $1 million related to water sewer. Note 10 relates to OPEB on pages 47 through 51. We've been through OPEB now for a few years. The OPEB liability's gonna be a little bit different next year with some new accounting standards, but for now, you'll see a summary on pages 47 through 51. Really, the highlight is that table within that note that sort of summarizes the overall OPEB balance, and at the end of the year, the town had an OPEB liability of about 1.6 million. As a frame of reference, the town's OPEB liability is actually very small in comparison to other communities that might be of similar size. And then lastly, on the footnotes, note number 15, starting on page 53, gives you some information related to the town's participation in the Essex regional retirement system. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, the accounting standards came out with a pronouncement that requires us to actually report a liability on the town's financial statements for your share of the Essex regional retirement system. So, you'll see information about that on that particular footnote. And as a frame of reference, that liability's a little over $8 million at the end of the year. So, again, a pretty large document, about a 50-page report there, 60-page report, feel like those are sort of the highlights that we wanted to point out in the financial statements. So, before I move on to the management letter, does anybody have any specific questions as it relates to the financials?
Gee?
What is your feeling about the Coast Guard houses fund?
That fund has actually been around for a while, and the only reason why that fund shows up as its own column is because it has a pretty large note payable balance of about $1.9 million. But there's really been no activity in that fund for quite a while, but because that note payable is still sitting out there, we have to report it as a major fund. Once that short-term note gets converted into long-term debt, then that particular column will no longer show up in the financials.
So, they're taking the rentals to pay off the interest payment of $30,000 a year. The rest goes to the general budget. Do you have any, I, why haven't, do you have an opinion on why it hasn't been, hasn't been paid down?
What, the no payable balance?
The 1.866 million.
Well, that's not necessarily something that would necessarily be part of the scope of the audit. That's basically something that relates to the town's financing in terms of converting that short-term note into long-term debt. That's how it's gonna, that note will eventually be paid down, I assume. I don't know if the town has other plans to pay down that note payable, but typically speaking, they're paid down through the issuance of long-term debt. But in this particular case, I don't know if the town has different plans for paying it down.
So, Matt, what you're saying is it's basically a local financial policy?
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
Correct.
So, it was set back when Mark Collin was town administrator, and so it stayed consistent all the way through. And it's something we can continue to talk about, because that comes up every fiscal cycle, is a discussion with the Finance Committee.
Mike Manning had always, and I agree with him, motioned that we pay down principal. We're paying, right, and people should know this, that we're paying interest only on a loan, a 1.8 million dollar loan.
1.866 million.
Okay. I missed a couple of numbers.
I memorized it.
That, and again, I feel as though that's gonna turn around and bite us. So, we should be paying some of the principal down, and not balancing our budget with the rental income. And that all coincides with all the other stuff that we've talked about in the past, that if we sell them, the taxes won't achieve as much revenue as the rental would. So, rental, what do we get, 120?
It's about 100, well, it's about 180 when you look at the...
If you were to sell them outright, you'd have, you'd have half of that. So, we need to, but also, it becomes a liability.
But, but you do get rid of the $30,000 a year interest, too, so.
So, it's, it's almost a wash. I think it's almost a wash, so.
Seems like it.
But we need to talk about that, and we have a committee that's supposed to be...
Right, right. Oh, no, these are, these are questions I'd want to ask the committee too, if they're aware of.
Which I'm sure they are. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
But really, in that case, it really comes down to fiscal, fiscal policy, and that's not something we generally opine on, because, you know, it's up to towns and cities' discretion as to how to deal with these types of situations. From an audit standpoint, we don't find it to be a risk. Obviously, it's something you're paying interest on. Eventually, it needs to be dealt with. But in terms of those types of things, we let, we let the towns and cities decide how they want to deal with those types of things.
Right. And I'm sure you would've brought it up if it were an issue.
Yeah, if it were some sort of an audit risk or something like that, or, yeah.
It's been 10 years that we've owed this money, so.
Yeah, and it's one, and again, it's one of those things where, again, it's six to one after, if you could go different directions, like you said, it might be a wash if you decided to do something else. So, really, it's just a sort of a town policy decision.
Thank you.
Got it. And then, as far as the management letter goes, assuming none of the comments in the financials, the management letter is really roll forwards of some comments from the previous year, and just sort of as a frame of reference, in terms of these comments having been there, these comments that are in the management letter are comments that we have in other management letters in other communities, that also take quite a while for these things to resolve themselves. When you're talking about financial policies and procedures, risk assessment, disaster recovery, those are all items that are really big-ticket, long-term items, that really take a while to fully complete. So, really, as you go through the management letter, you'll see that really the comments are pretty consistent with the previous year, and you'll see from the management responses as to where the status is with all those. So, again, we don't feel like any of these are necessarily major risks, otherwise we'd report them as significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. But we do recommend that the town continue to make movement towards these items that you see here in the management letter. So, that's really it from our end.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to vote to accept the report?
Somewhere around page one, right?
Exactly. To be, to be or not to be.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the audit report for year ending June 30th, 2017, as presented by Clifton Larson Allen LLP.
Okay, I'll second that. For discussion? Discussion?
No.
Hearing and seeing none, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Matt.
Right now. Okay, so we get that out of the way. That's good, the audit report. I just want to make a one note, that we had a petition from Nahant Market for a malt beer and wine license, and they've retracted it. So, that is off the agenda, and they pulled back on that, so there'll be no beer and wine license down there. Okay, so we can put that aside. Now, I want to go to the Citizens Forum. Anybody? Yeah. Why don't you, you can, you can actually come up here if you want, Christine. This is Christine Liscio.
Johnson Liscio, but that's okay.
It's much easier so we can hear you.
Yeah, so I was going to send you this letter, but I thought that I would come up and talk with you about it, and I've talked a little bit with Dennis before the meeting, so some of this might actually be a little bit tweaked in terms of where we need to go with it. But this is the letter I'm going to give each one of you. I also have some photographs that I'd like to go through, but if I could read the letter first into the record, and then you can go through the photos with me. So, the January 4th, 2018 coastal storm was a damaging and flooding event to many Nahant residents, especially those who live in the Willow Road and Lowlands neighborhoods. Properties and homes were flooded, resulting in significant loss and damage. During the storm, as it often does, the town of Nahant pumped water back into the ocean along Willow Road, and there was no pumping done in the Lowlands neighborhood, except by the residents themselves. The repaired storm drains on Fox Hill Road, thank you, Dennis, they did help to divert some of the sea water to the drainage ditches. However, the drainage ditches quickly filled and caused the water to remain in the water table, and as a result, in Lowlands residents' basements and properties. Although some attempts by the town have been made to clean the debris from the ditches, to date, many remain narrow and clogged with growth and debris. In addition to these obstacles, the ditches themselves provide a very long, over 2,000 feet, and sometimes uphill. In fact, there are three places on the ditch map where the water reverses direction and has to go uphill, path to Bear Pond on the golf course. Even if all of the ditches were cleared of debris and water, the water will not flow uphill to a place that is already full of water. And to date, the water remains, or it was, at least when I wrote this letter, in the golf course, Bear Pond was still flooded, and the golf course was flooded. So, the water is just not effectively moving from the Lowlands uphill, all that distance, into the golf course. During the recent storm, there were, we were somewhat fortunate that there had only been one tide that caused flooding to the Lowlands. In other storms, successive high tides have resulted in even more damaging flooding. I think it was the No Name Storm, we had three damaging tides, and so, you know, we had much more devastation. So, we were fortunate this time. Included in this letter are photos that show the blocked ditches, the current ditch water levels, the compost area of the dump, and the flooded golf course, all taken on January 14th. On the flood map of Nahant, the compost area is shown as a flood zone, which allows waters to wash out from short beach. Over the years, the compost area has been raised so high above the original grade and the surrounding Lowlands neighborhood, that floodwaters have no other path than to flow back into the Lowlands neighborhood, further placing all Nahant residents at risk. During the storm, many of the Lowlands neighbors called, during this most recent storm, called the police and fire departments for assistance, and they did assist. There was at least one medical call to the neighborhood as a result of the storm. In 1978, a resident on Fox Hill Road died as a result of flooding, and a house burned to the ground. At the, if the intersection of Castle Road and Nahant Road closes due to flooding, emergency equipment, equipment cannot get into or out of town. This is a town-wide safety concern, not just a concern for Lowlands residents. Ultimately, the goal of protecting life and property is a concern to all of Nahant. Clearly, there needs to be a better solution for removing water from the Lowlands neighborhood than waiting for the golf course to drain, or hoping that it will flow uphill through obstacles to reach the other side of Nahant. And at one time, there was a connection between our storm drains, which were repaired partially this year, to go across Castle Road and out back into Lynn Harbor. And a house was built at one point and blocked off that drainage, so that drain is not working. That's why we're now forced to send water to the other side of town. There was an article proposed and supported by the FINCOM last year for town meeting to improve drainage to the Lowlands and help divert water from the neighborhood. We asked that the Nahant Board of Selectmen and the town manager, administrator, place this article once again on the town warrant for 2018 town meeting, with an amendment that would specifically help pump waters from the Lowlands before we have another real crisis. We know that the town is facing many financial stresses. However, the flooding in Nahant's Lowlands is predicted to only get worse with climate change. We have weathered many storms, we have lost life and property in the process. We ask you to please help us protect life and property for all of Nahant's residents by resubmitting the following article, written by DP W. Director Dennis Ball, and fully supported by the FINCOM in time for the April 2018 town meeting. And I will, this was signed by 13 residents, a couple were in Florida, we didn't get to them, but this is the letter, and there's some photos I'd go through with you. I did have this stamped by Peggy, because I was hoping to get it in your packet tonight, but...
No, I didn't.
I got here late.
Thanks. No, I know.
So, if you go to the photo, so there are the names of 13 residents, and I know, you know, we could put in our own article with the number of residents, but we would really prefer that the town support this effort to show how important it is that we protect life and property in the Lowlands, and in every neighborhood. If you go to the pictures, past the text and the signatures, you'll see that's the pump that's used on Willow Road. I hear we had some troubles getting it going, but it did eventually work. But we need something like that in the Lowlands neighborhood as well. Castle Road did close on January 4th due to flooding, and so emergency vehicles can't get back and forth in that area. And like I said, if Nahant closes as well, Nahant and Castle, it really separates the whole island. There's a picture of my neighbor's house, the water rushing through from Castle Road to Dave Walsh's house there, and Castle Road. This was myself and the neighbor pumping my backyard this weekend, 10 days after the storm. The water is still in our neighborhood because it just has nowhere to go. And, you know, it's, we know the water may come, but the longer it sits, the more damage it does to property. It's not healthy to have water that's been washed across roads and properties, and God knows what else, and full of bacteria also sitting in your house or in your, in your backyard. This is the sequence of the drainage ditches, and I started on Ward Road and kind of went along, but you can see that they are full, and when they're full, they can't accept more water. And this was not, you know, as bad as it could have been. And this was a full week after the storm. There's debris. This one here, the culvert's full, and where it goes under by the pumping station, the water was literally to the top of the culvert. So, you know, if there was more water, there's just nowhere for it to go. Some of the paths are blocked, we have things that have fallen in, or growth. There's one ditch there that comes from behind the pump house area, where it's completely overgrown. It's hard to tell. That one looks mostly like vegetation. Many of the places, it starts out wide, and then it gets very narrow, so it fills with water, but then it, it just doesn't seem to go anywhere. And there's also a picture of the compost area. Though it is a flood zone on the map, and it should be pretty much at level with the rest of the flood plain, it's gotta be a good 25 feet above my head. It's been filled in, and it is causing water to back up into the neighborhood because it can't go in that direction, it can't go over the hill. This is the only culvert I could find following the path, and it goes under Flash Road. It's a very small culvert, to take all that water and then divert it to Bear Pond. It's really small. And then, if you go to the bottom of the page, there's another culvert that opens up into the golf course, and again, it's blocked with vegetation. Dennis just told me that's on the docket to be done. But if you get to the golf course picture, which is the last one, you can see that a full week after the storm, it's full of water. So, water, once it hits its level, is not going to accept more water. So, it's just not a viable solution for the Lowlands neighborhood. Dennis has since, he didn't know I was coming here tonight, so, but he told me that some of the things on the agenda to do for this $175,000 were done, but the things that I've added in red letters, you can see, would be the installation of a pump for the Lowlands, and that hasn't been done. And connecting that culvert, that, or the storm drain that would go out back into Lynn Harbor, and make it a much shorter run for the water, I think would be something maybe we could tweak the article, but...
The, 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 the house isn't actually on top of the pipe, it's broken.
Okay.
And it's, and it's plugged at the end, at, on Dog U. Beach, you can't even see the, the elf, the elf fall.
Right. So, that, perhaps, you know, this, I can rewrite and resubmit, so that, you know, the things that are done, we don't have to do again, but that we could connect up that pipe, so that we can pump out the neighborhood, because it makes sense, we're having more flooding in the properties, because that hasn't been working for some time.
It was, I was down there, it was scary. I mean, I went down, and, because Marcia DeVal had called me, and I was up to my waist in water.
Yeah.
I feel, it's terrible. I mean, we gotta do something. Obviously, the drains aren't... Let me ask you this, Dennis. Did, did, did the pumps, sorry, did the pumps at Bear Pond, are they, were they working? Are they working now?
There's one, there were two pumps. One was taken out of service. The remaining pump is functioning. During the storm, we got that pump functioning, because it was frozen. The elf fall pipe actually was frozen as well, that was our difficulty. We brought in some portable pumps to mitigate that. Those pumps had been running for, continuously for almost five days after the storm, to de-water the island. But the point A, the point A to point B, solution to this Liscio, Johnson Liscio's concern, is the restoration of that elf fall pipe on across Castle Road. We did have an opportunity this past summer to camera that area.
Yeah.
Fixed some, some of the catch basins on the lower end of Fox Hill Road. Those pipes were collapsed.
Yeah.
They were, they were, they were fixed. We got a camera into the, that elf fall pipe that we're speaking of. Know we can get so far because of the way it's built.
Yeah.
We didn't see any indication that it had a tremendous amount of degradation to it. So, the issue is, one, after speaking with Shelly Hamilton, we confirmed that that easement still exists. The pipe still exists.
Yeah.
In some, some form. It's a matter of finding the outfall, the actual outfall, because somebody did build a wall over it.
Oh.
I mean, blocked it, so we'd have to re-establish that. But that's the easy solution.
Can they, can we put a pump in there, in the, in the, in the catch basins, you know, in the, in the dry well, or the, whatever you want to call it?
Well, you could probably catch, put a, put some sort of basin in the ditch area.
Just to get ahead of it, so that, you know, get ahead of it, so that you can absolutely pump it.
But it, you know, it's...
Because they're almost below sea level there.
Right. So, to Christine's point, I mean, we were between a rock and a hard place. We had, we had an ultra-high tide. The tide did not turn as quickly as they normally do, it just sat there. So, there was really no place to put the water, either on, on Wilson Road or Castle Road. That was the twixt we were, we were in. Ultimately, when we were able to move water, it moved.
Yeah.
But it took days.
Dennis, could you give an update on the mosquito control efforts, and then also the capital plan, and the fact that the funding that was being discussed is actually in there?
Right. So, as part of, as part of the mitigation, mosquito, we were joint ventured with Northeast mosquito control folks.
Exactly.
They've already did some mitigation, ditch cleaning, Ward Road portion of it, and a couple of culverts within the path. The next element of this is, will happen on the 6th fairway. That's gonna be happening... That's going to be happening in the next two weeks. It's probably about a thousand feet of drainage on the ditch mitigation.
And they had to wait until this winter so that when they were in there doing the work, they didn't do damage to the golf course area?
Well, correct. Right. We're working on the frost at this point. That's what we're waiting for. Otherwise, it would be just a muck.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have any traction. It would cost a tremendous amount of money to do so. So that those, that is in process. You'll see machinery down there hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We were waiting for some DEP documents. They had, we had to file. There, there's going to be a little bit of, um, not waste is a proper word, but.
Dredge material.
Yeah. Yeah, dredge. We have to dewater. So we had to specify some locations. It's probably about a hundred yards of cubic yards of material that will ultimately end up with. Yeah. It has to dry it out for us.
Oh, Christine, excuse me, Christine, telling people down there that I advocated for that, Dave Walsh can remember, I think we were the only two that started out by pushing. Back when my dad was around, a hundred and eight years ago, they used to have it flow into Lynn Harbor.
Mm-hmm.
And I've been pushing and pushing and pushing for it and gotten nowhere because you're disrupting everything.
Well, let's, let's get somewhere now. I'm, I'm about getting somewhere.
Even if we cut a, cut, even if we have to dig across the road and make our own little pipe across the road, it's worth it.
Because I think Dennis said there's a pipe that goes across the road and then it stops. So we just need to open it up.
The pipe was there a year and a half ago, too, is what I'm saying. I want, it, it should be done.
Yeah.
My, my.
It's time.
Is it submersible, is it, like I said, can you put a submersible in one of those basins that?
We could, we could do a lot of things to pump that stuff out. I mean, we could do a lot of things.
Because it's, it literally, I, I watched it. I was down there.
Right.
I saw a car that was flooding the water. But gentlemen, to pump it out, you're pumping it to a place that is overflowed with water is what Christine was saying. I walked by there. There was water everywhere.
I know. I mean, I bet it's a Lynn Harbor.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah. Well, that's where the outfall.
That's, that's, that's where we should go, in that direction.
But again, you know, we're, we're, we can put all the bells, whistles. We can build pumps. We can build Skylab. If the tide's the tide, the water is not going to go anyway. It's going to, it's going to sit in its collection point until Mother Nature lets it relieve itself.
True, but we're over a week out and the golf course is still flooded.
Well, you see.
And it could accept water at this point. The tides are low enough at this point that you could be pumping, so.
So there's two things happening from a, from a geological standpoint. One is, is that you have probably about eight inches of frost that's there now, right? So there is no water penetration through soil into the ditches. Everything's laying on top. We've had sub-zero, not sub-zero, but freezing temperatures over the last week. What you're seeing is, is giving kind of like a false positive, right? There is water there, but it's ice.
Right.
Okay.
But there was literally water in neighbors' yards when it wasn't ice this weekend, when it was melting and before it froze, it was still full of water.
So, so the question I have for you is, you know, we had a tremendous amount of rain over the last couple of weeks.
And all, but see, all of that seawater that came in froze and then it melted.
Right.
So it was still seawater.
Christine, a big part of what you were asking for is the reinstatement of that funding that was taken out last year.
Yes.
It is in the capital plan. We have a very aggressive capital plan this year and it's all within that funding. What you'll see is that, I'll have a discussion a little later on about the budget, the proposed FY 2019 budget. And we have about four million dollars worth of sewer and water maintenance repairs and in there is that funding.
Okay, specifically for the Lowlands, like?
Because what it does is it protects our facilities, the Ward Road facility being primary.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we have it in there for that purpose.
We also added the, the additional equipment, portable equipment that we need as well. You know, again, that's, that's up to the taxpayer.
Right.
To, to fund.
What about going through FEMA? I understand that they put aside a certain amount of funding, of their funding for mitigation purposes. Have we applied for grants for any of this through FEMA to see if they could help?
We apply routinely for grants. As a matter of fact, we're very aggressive and successful, but it, you know, you really have to take what they give you and a lot of it isn't directly applicable to this. So, but we do. We, we, we get a lot of FEMA, MEMA grants and we've been doing very well with those.
All right. And the reason it's not applicable for this, because you would think if the claims went down because people were putting in fewer claims, if they had less damage, it would be something they would support?
Well, it's interesting in grant programs, it's kind of like social engineering. What, what they do is they want you to accomplish something, so they give you carrots to get you to where they want you to go.
Right.
And so this being a long-term kind of chronic problem, they're looking to address some of the big issues like seawalls, break points in the, the protection of the Lowland areas.
Right. Which is another matter for another day.
I wonder if you could put a breakwater up there, but that's, because that's where you're getting all your water. It's coming from Castle Road.
It's coming from a couple of points on Castle Road.
I know exactly where it's coming from.
Yep.
And getting back to FEMA, you're, you're right. I, I just wanted to let everybody know that we actually got into the community rating system. It's been two and a half years and I finally convinced them to put us into it. We mitigated the problems that we had and we're in it now. We're going to have a June eleventh meeting with the ISO, the insurance people and, and FEMA. So people are going to see their flood rates drop again once we, once we get the percentages off. And I do want to talk to them about a grant or some kind of, you know, money because it, they, they want to know how much, there's a lot of questions and I'm going to be talking to you Dennis pretty soon and Jeff about, you know, open space and drainage and all that, because they want to know all this stuff. So I think it's important that we talk to them and see if there is something they can do, especially these guys, because they're, they're the, that's what they do and that's, that's all they do, so.
That would be great.
Right.
And just one other thing in terms of the compost area, is there a plan or anything in the budget proposed for lowering the grade and bringing it down to what it is, which is a floodplain?
And, and I can attest to that. I mean, I, I own a piece of property and I don't have flood insurance because my garage is paid for, but it is, been raised and it's got to stop because it's, it's a bowl. In seventy-eight, behind my garage is full of water. It would be almost impossible now because it's, it's blocked off and all the people on the area, it's on, it's pushing it the other way. And we really shouldn't be doing that. We should really take care of that area.
I'm happy to share a flood map with you to show you, you know, it is really supposed to be a wash area for Short Beach.
Well, DEP's the one that gave, gave the town the permits and I don't know why, but they did.
And you know, I get that and, you know, but I guess, does it have to be a permanent storage, you know, should we be taking and, you know, recycling, but then taking, getting it out of the area again, so that we're bringing it down to a level that's manageable because it's very, very high right now.
Yeah. Well, the administrator actually did a good job getting rid of a lot. There was an awful, there was an awful lot in there. And I think, how many cubic yards did you pull out of that?
Oh, that actually was done before I was, was here and I can't give you the, the number, but we spent over two hundred thousand dollars in hauling that out there and it's very expensive to do so. Dennis is still trying to do a controlled burn, which would get rid of a lot of the organic material. I know, exactly. And then we are also, we have funding that we use to haul material out. And so this is on a weekly discussion that we have.
Isn't that like ten thousand dollars over here?
Ten thousand dollars a year, yeah.
Right. So maybe we need to look at that amount because it seems ten thousand dollars isn't scratching it. We're bringing in so much more than we're taking out that maybe we need to look at that figure.
So we need to do more for that area. And, and the other part of it is, the other part of that equation is, they're going to want to know how many repetitive claims we have, you know, from FEMA. And that will be almost a detriment to us. So we need to, we need to correct that. We can't have repetitive claims. I mean, people, and I understand you have to because you.
I know many neighbors who don't claim. They just pay the insurance and suck it up because their rates are going to go up anyway, so they just don't claim, even though they lose.
Well, they should. That's what it's there for.
You know, so.
Their rates are going to go down because.
That would be good news. But mainly it's the water concern. It's not, I mean, it is just a safety and health concern and.
So we're happy to say at this point that the capital plan does contain the funding in there and so.
Do I need to do anything specifically?
Well, what it'll do is Dennis or I will be in touch with you and I'll give you a copy of the capital plan.
Okay.
And I'll highlight where that is. And it's just really kind of a monitoring and making sure that somehow through discussion it doesn't pop off.
Yeah, we got to keep it in there.
And, you know, last year it was made, the decision was made for financial purposes, but this year I don't think that'll be the same case because we understand the emergency need for these, this funding.
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Christine.
Steve, did you have any questions anymore? Okay. Okay. While I have Dennis here, we can, want to do the, the WAF update?
Sure. Dennis, Dennis, want to give us a quick update?
All right, thanks for your time tonight with respect to the, giving me the opportunity to give an update on the WAF. It's been a little bit of time since the general public has had any, any information with respect to the WAF in a public forum. So let me give you a quick project history, just to bring people up to speed. Two thousand and sixteen, the town applied for a Seaport Economic Council grant for the purposes of requiring funds for the repair, the restoration of the WAF. There was a grant awarded in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars. It is structured as a reimbursement grant. We have to spend the money to get the money back. The project was engineered. Child's Engineering is the engineer of record. Was placed out the bid. Unified Construction of Everett, Massachusetts was the apparent little bidder. Their bid came in at five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. The next bidder was in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. The balance of the project funding, the delta between the contract amount and, and what was actually the grant, the grant award was funded by CPC funds, right, to the tune of about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Contract was signed November eleventh, two thousand and sixteen with a substantial completion date of April first, two thousand and seventeen. Due to the wall, the wall restoration was complete, that work was completed. Due to fabrication lead times with an essential project component, which was the powder-coated sheet piling, it became very, very apparent that the contract contracted substantial completion date, the original substantial completion date was not going to be met. To retain our Seaport grant, the contract was extended with a remobilization of December first of this year, or December of two thousand and seventeen, with a new substantial completion date of April fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen. On December first of this year, oh, excuse me, I'm still in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, Unified Construction took custody of the product, of the property. Just thank you to the Haba Masarabi Tibbo as well as the Lobsterman for, for their cooperation to get the, the project back on its feet. I do need to make one statement. If the general public has any technical questions regarding the project, the Board of Selectment nor the town administrator would necessarily have that information, okay? They would have generic information relative to dates, but if the general public has technical information, questions with respect to the way this thing's being built, those answers come out of my office, all right? Knock on my door, call on my phone, I'll show you the plans. They're available. There's a lot of, the sole, the sole source of information relative to schedules or tech, technical information is derived out of my office and no other social media outlets, okay? So I'm more than happy to answer people's questions.
So in that, in that sense, I overheard or heard up here that it would be done by December twenty-ninth, starting December first?
No, that's, there's no way that would have been done. December twenty-ninth, that's three weeks in, in the middle of Christmas.
Yeah.
So anyways, so that being said, good.
I would, I would not make that up.
No, I, I'm.
And it was, so that type of discussion has to go through Dennis.
See the light? All right.
No, I'm with you.
This is where, this is where it stops, right here.
I sat here and said, how could it possibly be done by December twenty-ninth?
No, it's not going to happen, all right? So I just implore, implore people that have questions right here.
So do we have a completion date?
Yes, we have a completion date. We have a contracted completion date of April fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen. However, we're pushing for April first of two thousand and eighteen, all right? Contractors are back on site. In fact, they're there tonight, working. They're working to, with the tides, with the weather, so they're not going to have, they're not working with traditional work hours. So at seven o'clock in the morning and peeping with your binoculars and they're not there, they may not be there because the tide is such that's not going to allow them to get the work done that's scheduled for that particular day.
But I don't peep. I drive down to make it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's okay. We have a lot of sidewalk engineers. We're, we're good. We're good.
I'm good, too. You can certainly understand, though, why.
No, I understood.
Absolutely. It was what happened last year.
No, no, absolutely. And, and I, believe me, I've, I've been in the business a long time. You get that tweak in your gut, you know, you know when things are awry. The project was off, was off kilter. I'm not even saying the word kilter. When they were back on site in December, just before Christmas, they were driving some sheet piling for the purposes of building the Coffe Dam, all right, which that allows that area to be de-watered, okay? They were not hitting, they hit refusal at a too shallow of a depth, all right, for their comfort level. We went back to the engineers, got a resolution. They're satisfied with their means and methods. They changed their means and methods to get to our goal of getting a complete ramp. I'm satisfied with that. The engineers are satisfied with that and let, get them on their way, all right? We, as a customer, okay, do not have any control on the daily activity down there. That's not our business. Our business is making sure that when April first rolls around, that we have a functional dock, I mean, a functional facility.
Did you realize that last year, a week before it was supposed to be done, I was told, I was told that it was going to be done on, on.
It couldn't have been done because I, I mean, my, the red flags went up very, very soon.
I have all the emails, Dennis.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
You know, and I don't want to argue about it. I'm not going to argue about it. I'm just, I, I don't trust them and I, and I just, and I don't.
Today, today, as we sit, what's today's date?
Today is January sixteenth.
Eighteenth, okay. As we speak at quarter past eight, all right, I'm, I'm very confident, all right, that we're going to get that job done. I will know, I will know.
That's all I need to know.
I will know and you will know. As soon as I know, you'll know.
Okay. Hence the update. This is very important for the town because they do ask us all the questions.
Of course. But like, like I said, T, they, they ask you technical questions, schedules, dates.
No, they ask, they ask where, what's going on? Where is everyone?
Right. They're not, they're not necessarily going to be there every day.
Now let me know.
They're not going to be there every day. They're not going to be there every day.
No, we understand that.
And they, and they have been very good at, at giving me a heads up on a daily basis, when they're going to be there, when they're not going to be there. Again, today, specifically, they weren't there all day. They pulled up at 5:00 this afternoon because the tide was running out, and they gave them an opportunity to, to drive their piles tonight. They're, they're, they're working on the candlelight right now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Which, to that point, I guess we have to also ask for the consideration of those who live in the general area.
Yes.
You know, it's, we greatly appreciate your patience and tolerance with this, but as Dennis aptly pointed out, is that we have to work with the tides. And so, you know, we appreciate your patience, please call us if it becomes too much of a nuisance, and we'll, we'll see what we can do.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Good?
Thanks, Dennis.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, next, on the agenda is the Fire Station Assessment Committee, ongoing review and discussion. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Fulgham.
Dave, it's good to see you back from Florida.
Yeah, it's like, flew back this afternoon, just so I wouldn't miss this flight.
You're a dedicated chairman.
Okay. What do you have to report to us, Boris?
Oh, thanks. I'm sure you've got to read the email that I sent you about probably two and a half weeks ago, which was basically a summary of our meeting that we had back on December 6th, and which had broke down exactly why we need the two articles, one for the temporary, temporary building for the fire engine when it arrives in November, and the second for the work that needs to be done to bring the station up to stuff, snuff, and be able to handle the engine when it arrives. So basically, if you've read it, I can answer questions that you have on, on that, so that it's probably easier for me to do that than just recapitulate everything that we've talked about.
Mr. Taylor, questions?
On the $300,000 article that you're proposing, I'd like to see it written a little different, if I could just propose it to you?
That's fine.
"Vote to appropriate $300,000 or any other sum of money for engineering and design services for the expansion, renovation, or construction of a new code-compliant fire station," is what it now reads. You've, you've asked to put $3 million into renovating the existing and expanding, which is great. So I figured, by putting in the word "construction," just, it doesn't fit well with me, and I thought that we could write, "For the expansion and code-compliant renovation of the existing fire station." I think that makes more, that makes more sense to me. Maybe, maybe I'm out in left field, but as soon as I say, "You want to renovate, but yet you're putting the word 'construction' in there," you might get some people saying, "Whoa," because you have me saying, "Whoa."
The only thing I would caution on that is, what this, what the article is intended to do is create a castle and umbrella, and then the motion, when the motion comes in, that goes down to the specifics. So this is intended to keep options open until you get to the motion, and then when we get to the motion, it'll say specifically renovation. And that's the traditional approach, so that you don't end up finding yourself boxed out of what your preferred option is when you put the motion together. So you can see it says, "Or construction." It, it offers expansion, renovation, or construction, so...
But we don't want construction, we want renovation.
But if you're looking at from a...
Am we going to confuse the public?
Well, if you're looking at it from a bonding perspective, you just want to make sure you keep your options open, for classification on bonding, financing, all of that. So I can see what you're saying, and I think through the conversations, we can continue to focus them on that that's not the option. But the preferred option, for purposes of keeping our, our options open...
The lingo.
The lingo, exactly.
Okay.
That's a good way of putting it.
Okay.
Well, the only, I, I, but I, T, I, I have to agree with T, because, let me, let me just say this. We've gotten into this, we've been going down this road for two and a half years now. The original intent of this committee was to have a fire station assessment, and that turned into taking school property, which by the way, I noticed, I noticed that you mentioned in here that one of us knocked it down.
That's correct.
I don't believe so.
Yes.
I don't believe so. One person can't do that.
Ask your, to your right.
One person can't do that, Dave, okay?
Well, it did happen.
Doesn't matter. One person can't do it.
Whatever, whatever you want to say.
What about the school committee?
What about the school committee?
Did they have any say in it? Did they want to have their land taken by the, by the school superintendent?
No.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that. You didn't have to put that, you didn't have to put that in your letter. One person didn't, one person didn't take that away from you, okay? This was a fire station assessment.
That's correct.
Which turned into a DPW building, a public safety building for $17 million. We have a sewer problem breathing down our throats, correct?
That's correct.
So you're talking about spending another $300,000 for this, $75,000 for this, you know, when this should have been taken care of probably two years ago, with a fire assessment. That was the original intent of Mr. Antrim, and the original, and the town administrator, to have a fire station assessment. I don't know how it got to this, because it's two and a half years later, and we have nothing, and we have to build, now we have to have, come up with a, a plan to have a temporary storage building, which in my opinion will look like hell, and it's, to me, you're going to heat it, which is going to interfere with the green community, things that we're working very hard on, by the way. And I don't think it should have gotten to this point, my opinion. And one person didn't shoot it down, so you should correct yourself on that.
So Dave, your request is that, your request is that these two articles be placed in the warrant for continued consideration, and they be put into substantially this form. And what that allows for is, if it is placed in the warrant and kept there, the selectmen and the finance committee can continue to review, and can do anything up to even passing over, or indefinite postponement. So if, if you were to allow these to continue in as they're, you know, substantially awarded, it just keeps your options open?
It keeps your options open, but I think Mr. Taylor hit the nail on the head, because what you're going to have is, people get up at town meeting, "Why aren't we constructing a big, big public safety building? And where are we supposed to get that money?" I mean, I, I just don't understand how, because you have one day, six hours, seven hours to commit and, and spend a ton of money, $10 million. And half of that goes to the school, and the other half, I mean, we're, we're borrowed to the, to the limit. We're going to be borrowing more money for the sewer, okay? And now you're, you're talking about an engineering study, or whatever, and which, and that door-widder plan is gone, it's completely gone, out the window, because it was a public, it turned into a, a fire assessment turned into a public safety building. And that's still a sore subject with me, because it shouldn't have gotten that far. We should be, and I agree with Mr. Taylor, it should be the engineering and design services for renovation of the existing fire station, that's the way it should be, to house what, what we have there. Because if you, if you continue on this path, you're going to have people get, well, why, you know, and this, why are we building a new DPW building, and a police station, and all this? It's going to get out of control, and they're not going to get what they want.
Well, the whole, the whole purpose of what we're doing is, is getting those parts out of it, and doing something of renovating and expanding the building that's there. If we didn't do this, and we were building, say, we were building up at the school, on the school property...
Yep.
We'd be talking a project that's more than twice this amount of money. So we are trying to do it for the...
Exactly, and you weren't going to get the school property, because they weren't going to release it.
So that's why we've done what we've done.
All right, so...
We're trying to work so that we can get articles in front of town, so they can vote whether they want to do this.
And you're coming up with a $3 million price tag for an, an expansion of a fire station.
Expansion and renovation.
$3 million bucks. Okay. Do you want to see the article written different? If you do, then by all means, you know...
Between, between no and but a time, we accept everything yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what we'll do.
That's a very good point. We have about a month to really kind of finalize the details.
Yeah, I mean, I reviewed this a lot, I spent a lot of time on this, just trying to, they, and I thank you for the work you did, this is a great job. It needs, something needs to be done. I, I understand that, but we've been for this town meeting before, you know, they look for things to go anti, sometimes. So I mean, it, it, it needs to be reworked, in my opinion, but move it forward.
Okay.
I think you need to have a specific plan to bring to town meeting.
So, so from my perspective, when the committee uses the word "construction," that's, that's in the context of renovating and dealing with the existing structure, which has proven by multiple assessments to be inadequate. It's by no means the only inadequate physical infrastructure of the town, okay? You talk about the water, you talk about the sewer, we talk about the wharf, but it is, it is also a need. So this committee's effort was meant to kind of distill that down. It, it, it's not to gratuitously spend $3 million, or whatever amount of money it ends up being.
I understand that.
But to recognize the need, and to, to try to address the need.
But you do realize, when you write an article like this, you're going to have the police up here, and the DPW wanting, and then you're going to, it's going to wind up right back where it was two years ago, with a $17 million public safety facility.
No, I don't, I don't think, well, well, we, we as in you, and we as in citizens and members of, you know, this committee, can't let that happen. And one of the things that can help us is to have a clear understanding from, from, from you guys about what your vision and longer-term plan are for the, for the high-level capital needs for the town, you know? Obviously, the water and sewer infrastructure are what's at the top of the list now. But just looking at that now, because that's what's right in front of us, is kind of just perpetuating the same cycle, purely reactionary. So, so if, if we have clear thought, insight, and, you know, projection into the future, and see that a new fire station makes sense, and it's well-reasoned and thought out, then it should be able to be defended, and it should be defended to the, to the, to the police, to the BPW...
A fire station.
A fire station, exactly.
And that's it?
Correct.
Okay.
I should note that the selectmen also asked that a DPW facility and a police facility be placed on the capital plan, so they are in there. And I do speak with the police and DPW on a regular basis about this, and so they're very attuned to what's happening, and then the kind of order in which these buildings will be taken. And we all kind of understand that the debt schedule is a debt schedule. You know, we will never be at a point where we'll be, we'll have no debt. So we just keep working the debt schedule to keep it comfortable within our tax limitations. So right now, we have all three buildings in the capital plan.
What, a selectman asked you to do that?
Yes.
Richie Lombard asked him, I don't remember. Okay, Mr. Feinberg, Chief Feinberg, I'm sorry.
I, I just want to clarify one thing. You keep referring back to the prior assessment that was done. This is not another assessment. This is a critical, critical component of moving forward into the construction phase of the renovations. In order to go out for bid for construction, we need architectural and engineered plans, and that's what this funding would provide for us. So I just want to make sure that you're clear on the distinction between having another assessment of what we have and what we need, versus what it is that we're actually asking for.
I, I totally understand that. I just think that the assessment was a waste of money, that's just my opinion. It was a waste of, you know, of, and time, simple.
I, I can't speak to that, that assessment...
I'm not afraid to tell you that.
Right, that, that assessment was completed before I started here, so I can't speak to that. I can only go with the results that...
The original grant was given to Austin and Mark to do a fire station assessment, not a public safety, take school property assessment. That's just not how it was, was set up. And unfortunately, now we're at where we're at, you've got a brand-new engine coming that he got, and we have nowhere to put it. We have nowhere to put the other engine.
So my, my opinion on that, because it was my first year here, my opinion on that was the first, it was a two-part assessment that cost $15,000. The first part was well-done, and it explained all the deficiencies and things that needed to come up to code for the fire station. Someone made a decision to do a Part B on different site locations, and that's where the multifaceted $16 million building came up. And, and it went from a fire station into an uproar, because I heard about it.
So looking forward, we have two articles that we all agree will be kept on the warrant, and the committee will continue with your work and do PR leading up to the town meeting? Is that correct?
And you do, and you do, and you have to remember, you know, meeting code, the building's never going to, it's not going to meet code the way it is, we understand that. But that's what we have a building inspector for, we don't need a consultant to do that. We have a building inspector that knows this stuff, he's supposed to know this stuff, and he does. So, you know, I would say consult with him, talk to Wayne, see, see where you are with it, see what you need to do. But, and see, if you need to be up to code, because I don't see us spending, I don't see us spending $4 million bucks, I just don't, I, or $3 or $4 million on, on, I, I just don't. That's just my opinion as a taxpayer, so...
Those numbers that were developed by the group were purely educated guesses, all right, by people that are in the business, that understand prevailing wage, understand the wage rate, understand the construction cost. That's where that number was developed from. There were certain assumptions based upon what we know today, okay, and that's, that's how that was developed. Can that be scaled back? Possibly, but we don't know that until we have a defined plan and specifications that somebody can actually put a pen to paper.
I don't think you should put a price tag on anything, because it's scary. I think what you need to do is come up with a plan, what you want to do, and that's it. And talk to the building inspector, he's the professional, he gets paid for that, and find out what the code is, and what you need to do.
So we, so we...
The FEMA stuff, it's in an A, it's in an A-zone, let me just, I'm going to explain this once again, and this will be the last time, it's in an A-zone, and you have, you have garage doors, water goes in, water goes out. It's an, it's a non-factor. That is a non-factor, okay? You can build in an A-zone, they don't have to be on stilts, you don't have to put breakwaters up, it can be absolutely built there. The garage doors act, and this is one of the sticking points before, that it was in an A-zone, the big flood zone, oh my God, it doesn't work that way, okay? It's not how it works. If you want, I'll bring FEMA in, they'll, they'll tell you.
All right, there's no need for that.
I, I can't, I can't hear you. If you want to speak, come on up here.
But to, to your point, very, very quickly, with respect to code, and we're talking semantics here, we're, anyone who builds a building or renovates a building is compelled to meet the building code if it hits, if we're renovating beyond a specific percentage of that building.
That's why we have a building inspector.
Correct.
We don't need a consultant, it's the same for the house.
We actually, we actually do need a consultant, but that, that's beside the point. We have two articles here now that we think are moving forward, and I think we can actually take that and use that to get us to the town meeting.
David, do you want to speak?
Yeah, so in order to, to, we're not, we're not talking about moving the location, so the A-zone, that, that's not a factor at all.
But he did.
He did in the beginning, you keep going to the past, forget about the past, there might have been some mistakes made that put us...
You certainly understand, it's two and a half years down the road, and, and, you know, I explained this, this was all explained before, and it was neglected, and it was just...
It was two and a half years ago, but a lot of that time was spent on focusing on a new building, which the consultants back then told us that we had to do. So we found the need to change...
The consultant that didn't have any elevations, he had nothing.
Exactly, but that's, that's in the past.
Waste of money, all right, thank you.
So you have what you need going to go forward? The two articles, we'll keep them in here. Do you want me to modify the wording?
What, what, what David had just said is exactly what is going to be said around town, and that has to get around town, that it's going to be for the renovation and up to code. Up to code's going to be expensive.
Let me, let me do this, I will take that construction comment, send it to bond council, and say, "Does it help, does it hurt us in any way if we take it out?"
Take it out, yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, great.
And why don't we talk to the building inspector and see what number we have to reach to comply with complete code? I'll ask him myself, I don't have a, I don't have a problem talking to the building inspector.
Great.
All right, thank you for your time.
Dave, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so that's the audit report, done with that. Okay, chief's update on the ambulance.
As well as chief, while you're up, could you speak to the safe grant as well? Thank you.
Yeah, I think it is.
Sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, what did I...
So if I may, I'm going to start with informing you that, once again, we received just under $5,000 in safe education money from the state.
Congrats.
Thank you. Safe, the safe program, the student awareness for fire education, it's a two-part program. Part of it is for elementary school children, and the other part is for senior citizens. This past year is the first year in quite a few years that Nahant has applied for and received the grant. Frank Papalardo has done an outstanding job of bringing programs to the schools and to the senior, senior center. He held a very well-attended educational program at the community breakfast at the church. With this funds, we've also purchased approximately 50 carbon monoxide detectors that we're going to be handing out to residents of the community, senior residents of the community that need them to be compliant in their homes with the carbon monoxide laws. So that's with last year's funds. We've put together and continued to develop a program for this year's funds, which will include continued public education and possibly other... include continued public education and possibly other purchases that serve the community. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that funding that's come available to us.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As for the ambulance, as you are aware, during the flooding, during the storm that we had, the ambulance was brought, brought a patient to the hospital on returning from the hospital to town. The decision was made by the crew to drive into the rotary, which at that point was flooded. They had spoken with the state police and, I believe, DCR representatives. They drove through. As they came through and almost made it onto the causeway, the ambulance died, stopped functioning where it was. It was towed from the scene by G and J. They did emergency repairs. They were able to replace the air filter, clean that all out, get it going again. They got, had it back to us by five-thirty that afternoon. Over the course of the next several days, it was noticed that it was not running the way it should be, that there was a, a white exhaust coming out. It was taken out of service, and it's currently at Minuteman Ford. In speaking with them yesterday morning, they've found several problems, but in order to fully understand the damage, they need to take the entire motor apart. I spoke with them at four o'clock this afternoon to try and have an update for you, and as of four o'clock this afternoon, they had not gotten it back into a bay to complete that operation. So, at this point, we do not know the full extent of the damage.
It's got bent connecting rods. You know what a connecting rod is, right?
I, I have a basic understanding of that. I'm not a mechanic. I know that there are two bent rods, and they believe that there may be further damage.
Yeah, so it needs an engine. Insurance?
We will see. We've made a claim. We're also looking into how the decision was made, and, you know, we'll, we'll report back on that as well.
If it's diesel with bent connecting rods, it needs an engine. The sleeve, I mean, this is what I do every day, so...
And so, the assessment is forthcoming. As soon as we do have that information, we'll pass it along. We'll bring it back to another discussion here.
That's too bad.
It is too bad.
I, I do want to thank Atlantic Ambulance for loaning us a vehicle, as they tend to do when we have mechanical issues with ours.
Yeah.
As they have in the past, and they've been very...
So, we had their, we had their ambulance on site?
Yes.
Oh, good. All right.
We are operating out of one of their vehicles.
They loaned us a vehicle?
Yes.
All right. I would assume that it's insurable.
Could you send them a letter from us thanking them, please? Sure. I'll be Richie.
Yes.
But seriously, that's very nice of them to do that.
Yeah, we, we have a mutual aid understanding. It's not a technical mutual aid, but it works the same way.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I would think it would be insurable. It's just a shame that it happened, and, and I, and I can understand. I know the, the firemen that were pretty upset that the, that the state told them that it could go through, and it just ingested water, and that was the end of it, so...
I, I can tell you that Maya did call me yesterday.
Yeah.
They will be going to Minuteman Ford to take a look at the ambulance, and then further, go further with the case.
How many miles are on it?
I, I'd have to look. It's probably approximately five or six thousand.
All right, yeah. Tell them you want an engine. Period. That's, that's the, and, you know, the insurance company. You know, don't, I wouldn't even fool around with that. You want the thing running, running right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the five K.
Yeah.
Tell Frank thank you from us.
Please. Okay, town administrator's report. So, we got the annual audit done, Jeff?
Yep, exactly. And so, at this point, what I'd like to do is walk you through, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, summaries of the warrant and the budget. We're about three weeks behind on the schedule, and what I'd like to do, if I could, is to get your thoughts on some of these high-level issues, and use those thoughts, recommendations, to incorporate them into this next round, that will then go to a set of meetings that occur next week. Wednesday, we're scheduled to meet with the large department heads, who will be giving presentations on their budgets to you, and then Thursday, we will be meeting with the finance committee to go over the higher-level detail. So, at this point, if you can indulge me, I'd like to walk you through the warrant. And as we talked about last time, the warrant is really just the kitchen sink. If we heard of something that wanted to be in the warrant, we threw it in here. So, if you look at the capital plan now, the capital plan has in there specific funding. There are about six articles here in the warrant that contain funding requests for capital. The way we are funding the capital now, we're funding it out of the general fund, so these articles won't be necessary. So, we can cross six of the articles off right off the bat. But looking at the others that are here, I guess I'd like to kind of walk you through them and just, again, get your thoughts on it. So, the first one is Article eight, and that's on the first page, and that's a by-law amendment for the stretch code. We will strive to get the proper wording on that. Enzo, you had...
Yeah, we'll get that.
Yep, exactly. And I'll be working with Diane about, on this as well, just to make sure that it's, it is where it should be.
Mm-hmm.
If you go to Article nine and Article ten, which is on the second page, these are two amendments that we have been discussing. Obviously, one has to do with regulating marijuana, and the second one has to do with a noise ordinance, which has, which specifically deals with the fact that we don't have time limitations and day limitations on when you can start construction and have to end construction. So, this attempts to address that. And I should say at this point that I'm not looking for you to kind of give me deep thoughts on some of these articles. I would like you to tell me whether you like them on the warrant or not this year, and we'll, we'll just continue rolling this down the, the hill. We have about a month before we have to finalize the warrant. So, again, we have the Article eight and nine marijuana law regulations, and then noise ordinance regulations. Then if you go to the next page, Article twenty-one and twenty-two, these are regulations that have to do with sprinkler systems, and this is brought up by the fire department as, you know, these are code issues that are advisable for us to take a look at. If you're comfortable, we'll go ahead and roll those forward, and we can get greater reports in detail on this through the fire department. And then, by the time we finalize the warrant, they can either stay on or come off.
So, that, that would be, I think it's a great idea that he's, he's doing this, the, especially for, for like the Angel and those places.
Exactly.
Yeah. No, that's, I think that's...
One would think they'd have it.
Long overdue.
One would think, yes.
But you're right. It's, it's better to have it on paper.
But you know, some of these buildings were actually just, they converted and converted and converted, and pretty soon they ended up with something they weren't ever intended for. Yep. The next one is Article twenty-three, which is a special injury leave indemnity fund, and this is something that is requested that we consider as part of our Maya insurance and state legislation. So, I'll give you more detail on that, and we can decide whether we want to keep that on there. Then going to the next page, Article thirty-two and thirty-three are the two fire station articles, so we'll roll those forward. Article thirty-six, now, this has to do with funding for two large projects that we're undertaking. You know, the Willow Road revetment that's right there by Kelly Green's next to Ocean View, that is in need of repair. So, we have been wor, we have actually a FEMA grant on that, and so we are working to keep that active, and there's a matching on it, so this will provide the matching.
That's Article thirty-six?
Thirty-six, yep. And then, Article thirty-seven's the big one. That's the sewer budget or borrowings. And so, right now, that's a mobile number. We'll be taking a look at the capital plan. Dennis and Dan will give us another report before we finalize the warrant, and we can determine if any of it needs to move, or if we're comfortable with the approximately four million dollar cost. So, that is, those are the highlight issues of the warrant. The rest of it is really cookie-cutter stuff that keeps coming back year after year, and it's the business of the town that has to be taken care of and the votes that are needed by the people. So, those items, I'll go ahead and regenerate them as we get into the capital plan. If you are comfortable with that, I'll take off the articles that are associated with the capital plan that are no longer necessary. Okay.
Great.
You bet. Now, moving to the budget. Give John. I sent that copy to you, John, but yeah, just so we have a hard copy with you. So, taking a look at the budget, we, again, are about three weeks behind. Deb and I are, the town accountant and I, are striving to pull together and shuffle the numbers together in a way that we can get it in front of the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen, looking at it from a very high level. The budget approach is similar to what it was last year. We requested level funding. However, this year, this is the third year of level funding, so we're starting to see some unique stresses that we, I'm going to recommend that we address some of the stresses, but where we can avoid it and we can stay at level funding, I'm gonna continue to, to request that. So, as we go, at one of the next meetings, when we go through the itemization, you'll see where we have some that I'm just gonna identify. We need to address that stress. Looking at the salary increases, union negotiations are ongoing. They're going slowly, and I don't anticipate we're going to have a contract for the upcoming town meeting.
Okay.
But what I've done is placed into the budget a one percent increase on all salary components. So, that's a, that's a theme that you'll see through the budget itself.
So, that, that, that's for all the unions and COLA for the town hall staff?
Correct. All union and non-union. What'll happen is that the union, they actually don't receive their increase until they're, they have a contract in hand.
Until the contract.
The non-union will receive the increase.
What about the department heads and...
Most of their contracts specify that they rise at the same level as all others. So, if there's a one percent given to union and non-union, they receive one percent. We only have one contract, it's a fire chief, that is still specifying a different number.
Okay.
And that's the last year for that.
Yeah, that's in the contract.
Exactly. Now, the capital plan we'll go over separately, but as we get into the second page of this summary, there's some capital elements in there that really call out the highlights, so let's, let's continue down the line. Looking at the budget assumptions, if you look at the back page of this attachment, you'll see that these are our general budget assumptions that we use from year to year. As we've talked about, at this point in the fiscal cycle, a lot of the cost estimates that we were seeking aren't known and won't be known until about April, May, maybe even June.
Sometimes June, yeah.
So, what we do is we have to do an educated guess, and these assumptions are pretty consistent from year to year. For instance, if you go down to appropriations on the bottom, and you look at health insurance, we're carrying a ten percent increase from year to year. When we get into it, and we get closer to the end of the budget where we have to finalize it for print, we, we'll have the real number, and then we'll adjust it back. So, these are the standard assumptions. There's nothing really different here.
And this, last year being my first year, we had to do this too.
Yes.
Because it comes in so late.
Exactly.
Okay.
And, you know, we're very conservative on assumptions, because what we'd hate to do is find ourselves with not enough funding in the budget.
Yeah, to go low on, exactly.
Yeah. So, the other thing under budget overview is free cash. So, we have established what I continue to call an austerity program, but it's really a financial discipline plan, and what I did with the free cash this year is I funded the majority of it. So, you'll see that free cash reserves or an unused set aside, that means it's just sitting in our books and it's not used for any purpose, will be at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was the entire goal set for the five years. We have the stabilization fund contribution at fifty thousand, OPEB contribution at twenty-five thousand, and then the capital plan funding, I'm setting the floor right now at four hundred thousand, however, that can go higher. And at this point, that uses, uses eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of free cash, and leaves us a little more free cash that, again, if we need to apply it to capital or offsetting the other portions of the budget, we have that available. Now, looking at the budgets themselves, again, these are very high-level, and I just wanted to pull out the big issues and get your thoughts on it right now. Looking at data processing, we still have the ongoing transition of the treasure collector's office, so we placed fifteen thousand dollars in there as a means of assisting in cost offset for possible training, automations, new technology, et cetera. And that's an item that we can continue to track and determine what we want to do with that. All of these are in that same category. The police department has come forward with a, the funding request for the twelfth officer. At this point, I'm not recommending it. I think that we have a lot of costs in front of us, and I know the need is there. I very much support the twelfth officer, but it's a matter of timing, and I've spoken with the chief about this. So, it's my recommendation at this point, which this is, then gets into discussion with the three of you as to how we want to move it forward. So, your recommendation could be that we do fund it, so just so you understand what we're doing.
Yeah, we'll know better after we discuss it with them. Okay.
Yep. So, the twelfth officer is a request. Again, I have not put that into the budget that you've seen. We also have one retirement that's anticipated, so we funded eighteen thousand dollars for the buyout of that position. You'll see, if you go back to the assumptions, that we have an assumption for a three percent increase on retirement. So, but that is just for the general risk associated with retirement. The known ones, we go ahead and fund out of the budget. So, there's an eighteen thousand dollar funding in the police department. We also have ongoing fleet problems, and so there are two cruisers in the capital plan at this point for the police department. And that rolls, that sums up the police department moving to fire.
How, how are they gonna fund the, the police cars?
Most of the vehicles and fleets are funded through general fund.
I, I like, I don't, I don't want to borrow.
Yeah, exactly, no. We would only borrow if there's a large enough sum, you know, like, for instance, if you get some of the larger DPW trucks or fire vehicles.
Can we, we need to get, I want a copy of what years his vehicles are. I mean, one, one car, I think, is, is gonna be sufficient.
We have a fleet schedule. It shows all the fleet, and so I'll provide that for you.
Please. What's the fingerprint machine? Why, why do we need one of them?
It's just, it's, they have a fingerprint machine now that is failing, and so it's just standard equipment for their operation.
Okay.
Yep. And so, provide, okay. Looking at fire department, capital is the big issue there. We've talked about the new station. We also have the new truck coming in. The truck has a matching component to it that we, we have funded in the, the budget itself. So, fire, I mean, that's really their, the big driving element there. School department has an overall increase of four percent, and then they have a capital item of seventy-five thousand dollars for the replacement of the roof over the gym. So...
Do they have anyone who looked at that that gave an estimate?
They did. So, they've been making some repairs, and they've made some significant repairs to stabilize it for now, because they were having some troubles before. But the people who have come in to give estimates have said it's on its last leg, and so we can possibly get another year or two years out of it, so the funding is something that is recommended.
Rubber roof, I think, yeah.
It's, it is a rubber roof, yeah. It is a rubber roof, yep.
On that, do we, under that, because it's capital, do we have a say on that $75,000 roof?
We do. But it becomes one of those exercises of, is it prudent to take further risk? You know, because if something fails, you end up with the emergency costs, so...
Oh, understood.
Yeah.
I was over there for a few years that they had a flat roof and it kept leaking.
Yeah.
Year after year after year, they'd put more tar on it.
Did you see the new floor?
Gym floor?
In the gym, yeah.
Oh, no, not yet.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Oh, beautiful. I'll go over.
Beautiful, yeah.
No, I was just wondering because I'd like to support this, but we have to, will we come out and like support it openly?
Yep. So when we have the capital plan, we'll walk through all this, that's in there. And so it's, it's viewed as our debt, and so you, the selectmen, will be bringing forward a recommendation.
Dollar debt.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
There's one other thing I'd like to add, try to add to that, the capital, and that, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, the LED lights, they're around $70,000. If we can add that to their budget somehow?
I know Diane was talking about...
And only, and I can tell you, the $70,000 LED lights that will go into the school, first of all, is going to save us a lot of electricity financially. And our initial grant from the state, once we get into the green communities, the designation will be $129,000, which would be reimbursable. So we could reimburse ourselves.
Yeah.
The $70,000 for the school.
Good idea.
And it's a good idea because as it stands now, I think their system is failing, the, with the heat, you know, the, how the computers turn the heat, the lights on and stuff. I know that they had a system in there before, and I know that Tony's been mentioning that. But I think it's a good idea because LEDs burn hardly anything. So I think it's, moving forward, Diane, and by the way, Diane Monti is doing a great job as the chairman of that committee.
She is, she is, yeah. And Diane, I've been talking about this, and I support this because I agree this, the, the money is well spent because you just earn it back. However, it's really the timing of when we do it so that it hits the grant right. So if we put in the budget, it gives us that flexibility.
We'll be eligible for the grant key in October.
Okay, so we should put it in?
Yeah.
I think so.
And it's all contingent upon...
We'll talk to Tony. Tony, Tony's, I mean, he's the plant manager over there.
It's all contingent upon this article, stretch code, because we have to, we have to become, adopt the stretch code.
I don't, I don't see that failing. I really don't.
I don't either, no.
No, I don't either.
But you never know.
Yes, you never know.
Well, I have to, me and Nicole Gogan will have to do a good job of presenting it. We'll, we'll use her instead of me. That's a good idea.
All right.
So that's with the school, and I'll go ahead and add in the lighting. The public works department, what you'll see is Dennis, the DPW director, put in a lot of requests for increases, and I've slashed him. And I'm not being cruel, it's just that he's looking at it from the perspective, he looks at his history of spending. And when we look at the fact that we're investing so heavily in infrastructure, that a lot of his costs will change. So what I've told him is that let's pare back your, your requested expenditures until we better understand what these investments will change, how they'll change your world. So, and he's agreed. So, and he's got enough on his plate now to deal with all those improvements through the infrastructure. So generally, you'll see that there's a lot of cuts from what he's requested when you get into that, and we'll, we'll talk through that.
What about their, oh, he's looking, okay, so he's looking for three trucks?
He's looking for three trucks, exactly. And he's also looking for, to fund the sixth position. I'm not recommending that we fund the sixth position just because we have so much going on right now and the costs. And that what I would suggest is that the five people that we, excuse me, that we have are skilled laborers, and that we free them up from mundane tasks like lawn mowing to work on the infrastructure improvements that they can contribute to, and that we actually add $25,000 into the budget for a contracted lawn mowing service to take over for a year to two years. So...
We can talk about that.
Yeah, that's something to talk about.
The, the three trucks, I'm, I'm in favor because they haven't gotten trucks for, for a couple of years, and I just see what they're, you know...
Yeah.
But they're, they're pretty well beat up, so...
Yeah, you look at the cost benefit analysis of three trucks, and it's, it's, we definitely need them.
And I think they, they, they overdid it with the two big internationals.
Agreed.
But it's, I mean, they have them, they're beautiful, and they, they work with it, and they'll, they'll be there for another 20 years, so...
They look good on the Christmas braid.
Yeah. No, they actually, they, they work with us, so they, they're a good piece of equipment.
Did they have to go out and get a loan or a lease plow?
Yes. We have been, everything's been failing around Dennis.
Right.
The poor guy. So he's actually been leasing equipment as he needs it to stay ahead of the, the issues.
Oh, they've, they did a great job. I woke up today to more ice than I wanted to, and they were out there doing a great job.
I have talked to them a little bit about the salt. It's a little white out there for me, but...
Yeah, exactly.
The staffing, just, I'm still in favor of it, of adding the position, but again, we'll wait till after the meeting.
So we can continue to talk about that. Then the last item is snow and ice. We have funded it, we increased the funding by $10,000 last year. I'm going to propose we increase it again by another $10,000 because we're, we continually overspend that budget, which we're allowed to do. But it's, it's to the point where it's obscene.
But then you have to make up for it the next year.
Exactly. So you're always robbing yourself to pay it. So we might as well just do it upfront. And...
People don't realize that the importance of salt period.
Oh, yeah.
Until they hit black ice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's amazing the cost of it, but also how important it is. So that's an overview...
Excuse me, just gave me a great thing, robbing it forward.
Yeah.
That's what we do with snow and ice. That's right on.
It's so true.
And you sent us the email that we were already done. That was before...
It's so true, yeah.
Two, two other times.
On any of this, any comments, anything that really strikes you? If not, I'll roll it all forward and put it into the package. But if there's anything that you'd like to see modified at this point? No?
No, I think we need to start somewhere and then...
Yep.
No, this is a very good start.
Yep. Okay, great.
I know the FinCom wants to, wants to get rolling too, so...
Exactly. No, we're, it's tick tock, tick tock. So looking, looking at the next element, which is a part of this in the revenues, is the fee schedule. So what you see here is a fee schedule that you've had for the last three packets, and all it does is try to keep us current with recommendations from the department head or, as we do, comparables with other communities. And there are small adjustments that are throughout. If you look to the far right-hand column, they're highlighted as to where those adjustments occur. As you can see, there, there are not a lot of them. And so what I would like is, because the fees are, were supposedly to have been in place starting...
The eight, according to you.
Yeah, exactly. So if we, if I can get a vote on these, that'd be great, and we'll just roll those forward and use those as part of our revenue projections.
I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the attached fee schedule for effective 1/118.
I will second that motion for discussion. So you went up with the food service establishment...
Inspections, yeah.
Fees, okay. Fixer later, tobacco.
Boring.
They used to be 25, now they're 50. So that, some of them doubled, but...
Yeah. But you look at the scale, you know, you're talking 25 versus, you know...
Okay, it was okay with all of the 50, they were okay with this, right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. The next item is the classification study, and we had very minor modifications to that. And if you look at it on the second page, I don't know if your copies show it, but we have a change to the assistant librarian and the sailing supervisor. Big ticket items here. And so we, what we've done is the positions are currently at the top of their range. And so it, the range used to be 11 to 1450 on each, or up to 1450 on the sailing supervisor. It's now up to $16. It doesn't mean that everybody jumps up with the range, it just means that you have the capacity if it's increased by a COLA or some other factor.
I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the attached classification schedule for F-119.
I'll second that for discussion.
It was just those two items that were modified.
Right. And the rest of them are contractual, I suppose?
Yeah, everything else is as it was, and everybody's comfortably within their ranges. So...
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the big issue is the capital plan. Again, you've seen this before, there's been very few modifications. You can see that the green columns in the, the first two green columns, the first one is the general fund appropriation, so that's where we use free cash to pay for something. And then you also have the borrowing section, which is where obviously we go long-term, use bands or borrowing. So the majority of our vehicle fleets and some equipment are within the general fund and is, are being paid for by the use of the $400,000 that we talked about in the free cash use earlier. And I went over the highlights, so DPW has three trucks and numerous sets of equipment. Police has two vehicles. The fire station, the fire department will have the new truck, and all we're doing is paying off our matching for the grant. When you get, and the second pa, well, the bottom of the first page and the, most of the second page, that's where you see your big numbers for your water and sewer infrastructure emergency spending. We're looking at about four plus million dollars in this first round. Ultimately, if we were to do nuts to bolts in the entire system, you're looking at about 28 million. Yeah. But this was the presentation that Dan Cofflin gave to the board earlier, and he did a great job.
Yes, he did.
And so the, Dennis and Dan worked to call out those elements that had to be done now, and that's what this represents. And again, it's, it's a big amount. But if you're comfortable with what we're seeing here for numbers, what Deb will do now is roll this into a debt schedule, and we can start to look at the overall costs and how they'll hit, you know, our budgets.
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Yep. And, you know, in a quick nutshell, that's, that's the budget that I needed your input on. You know, I wanted to make you aware of what was happening in some of these more unusual things that happen in, from year to year. So now that you understand that, Deb and I will work like fools tomorrow and Monday to put out a product, get it in your hands by Tuesday morning, and then, and I know Deb is probably going to speed dial me here in a second, and try to get in your hands by Tuesday morning, and then we'll meet on Wednesday and Thursday, and that starts the process.
Great.
So we appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh...
Okay.
That's it for me, and then town hall office hours?
I think we're going to wait on that until we have a full board.
Yes.
That's, you know...
Last item is the tobacco licenses. We have three that we annually approve.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the tobacco licenses for 2019 for Nahat Market, Richland and Seaside Variety.
I'll second the discussion, discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then finally, if you go down to five, the town clerk has asked me to just have you sign the warrant for the special state primary.
Yeah.
And she wanted me to talk about it just so that she can get into the minutes. So all I'm going to do is say, you're going to be signing this tonight, you don't have to take a vote, and that authorizes the warrant for the special state primary, and we'll put that all in the minutes.
Yeah. And I, we noticed that in the paper that Nahat's going to get a big chunk of money for that election.
Yes.
$730,000 from the state.
To figure out where to spend it.
How generous. We possibly have a, we have a running person that's running for state rep, and maybe we can get more next time. If he wins.
We'll, we'll keep him close. And I think that's all we have for the agenda today.
Okay, so you want to get back towards the sign?
Yeah, I've got a whole bunch of things I need to sign.
Oh, all right, okay. Sure, it's a lot. And we also have a lobster trap.
No, you, you dealt with that last time. Some reason that's got stuck in there, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you, you've already authorized that.
Yes, we did.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
You did a good job, too.
I think that's pretty much it. Can we, I'd like to get, the next meeting, I'd like to see the COE Scotthausen committee come.
Yeah, they've, they've confirmed that they'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay, good. I'd like to get from them to see what's going on with that. And that will be February...
First?
First. Our next meeting is February first?
Yep.
Okay. I had asked for some time in February, that's good.
We are having one next week, though.
Yes, we have the Wednesday, which is the 24th, and Thursday, the 25th. Wednesday is at 6:00. That's just us and the large department heads.
Right.
And then there's a joint finance and board of selectmen meeting on the Thursday at 7:30.
Okay.
Right. And we don't have it televised at this point. Do you want it televised? Yeah, I mean, it becomes around...
It doesn't have to, but you know, it'd be nice if, if people would come up and watch it. Might get them out of the house, you know?
Yeah. It gets a little boring talking about the details, so I don't know if it would hurt our...
I don't, I mean, if you want to televise it, that's fine by me.
Okay. Let me see if our videographer is available.
Okay.
Great.
Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Thank you, John.